Good evening and welcome to the January 19th meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. This meeting is, will start at 7:07. Please follow us as the clerk leads us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So it would be recommended that the board approve the January 19th, 2021 agenda as submitted. May I have a motion and a second to approve that agenda?
Go move.
Any questions or comments? Let's see, all those in favor? Remember, get your hand in front of your, closer to your heads. So Sharon could see it. Any opposed? So we, Sharon, we good?
Oh, okay, sure. All are, all are in favor and none opposed. The motion carries.
Sorry. Okay, so now we are at, it's recommended the board approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the January 5th, 2021 meeting as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of recommendation from the Committee of Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendations from superintendent for personnel changes, and the request to approve the bids for, you know, that you have listed. Let me see if I can summarize that. For janitorial supplies, paper, and health and safety supplies. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none are opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. The treasure report is recommended that the treasure report include the cash report, the general fund to cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund to cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending November 30th, 2020 be approved. So may I have a motion and a second?
Go move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. So we have no special reports. And since we're doing Zoom, and again, this, we are going to do, at this point, we're doing it on a case by case basis, whether we meet in person, which is our preference. But we're Zooming. We, but when we Zoom, we're just not really set up for visitor speaking time. Although, we, you know, we always recommend, if you have questions or comments, to contact us or sent, you know, via email or directly. But today, we might have this. Which brings us to, quickly to the student report of Abby Jackman. Abby, would you like to give us the student representative report?
Sure. Okay, hi, everybody. It is that time again. Um, so to start things off, at Penfield High School, the Jazz Ensemble had their first meeting, and it was in person. Yay. At Bay Trail, tons of students were showing their support for the Buffalo Bills as they prepared for their playoff game last weekend by wearing Buffalo Bills attire. At Scribner, the Scribner PTA purchased recorders for third grade students. At Cobles, a kindergarten music teacher brought in a special friend named Melanie, who is a sock puppet during her virtual Zooms. The kids seemed to really like it. At Indian Landing, two second, second graders were able to practice floor hockey and their skills in gym class. Fifth graders also created notan collages in art and focused on creating negative spaces in their art pieces. Notan is a Japanese word that means a balance between light and dark. So it makes sense that it applies to that type of art. And my brother did correct me on how it was pronounced. At Harris Hill, there were some awesome bulletin boards created that helped students create goals and spread positivity. One was centered around spreading joy, and the other was for 2021 goals. Students also reviewed what culture is and took notes on topics surrounding culture. And a group of kids were building some snowman with the snow we received today during recess. And lastly, for district wide news, January 18th was Martin Luther King Junior Day, and all schools head off.
Very good. Thank you, Abby. Board members, any questions for Abby? All right, Abby, we'll see, we'll score you on how well you did with covering Tom's material. Which is, which is next? So now we are at the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam, would you like to go ahead and tell us what's left?
Absolutely. So we have, for superintendent's reports, just a couple of student and staff honors. I'm learning that Abby does a much better job. So I'm letting her take all the, all the credit for those great things. Thank you, Abby. And then just some updates for myself around, around COVID in the 2021, 2022 calendar. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl, who will provide some budget development updates. So first, Urban League Scholars, congratulations to the 51 PHS students who were recently honored at the Urban League's 36th Annual Early Recognition Virtual Ceremony, Salute to Black Scholars Program. The Black Scholars Program provides recognition, assistance, and incentives to students who achieve and maintain a B or better average throughout high school. And we talk about partnerships in our district quite a lot. The Urban League of Rochester has been a longstanding partner of districts within Monroe County, and their striving for excellence is something that we appreciate very much. So thank you to the Urban League of Rochester, and congratulations to the 51 PHS students who were recently honored. That's it, I just said one. So Abby's, Abby wins. So wonderful. Just some updates here, some COVID-19 updates. I can't wait to not have COVID-19 updates, but I think this will be a while. So just a little talk around vaccination rollout. You know, obviously, this is all over the news, but in terms of how it impacts schools, each county administers the vaccinations that they receive from the state. And some terminology we use here, obviously, is 1A is healthcare workers and frontline responders. They are considered 1A, and the county and most of the state has not finished completing the vaccinations for people who fall in the 1A category. 1B is school district personnel, and that's all members who work in a school district, from our bus drivers to B and G to teachers, all across school districts, and they are 1B throughout the state. So in terms of process and timeline, it is the sign up form that we have shared in our school district to our, all of our staff, which is either the state webpage and the county webpage to sign up. The county is working on a process to sign up school district personnel potentially within our county. And the biggest piece here for all of our staff and as well, all of our community is just patience. It's going to take a long time for everybody in the state to be vaccinated, those who choose to be vaccinated. And it's just really patience. And it's a reminder too, that although the, what the term we use is that there's a light at the end of the tunnel with this vaccination rollout, that it's still going to be diligence and making sure that we're wearing masks and following all the safety protocol. In terms of that safety protocol is rapid testing in our schools. We started today, we have emailed families and let them know. And today was the first day where we conducted the rapid COVID tests to school students and district personnel. We do not have to do it, it's not a mandate, because we are still in the yellow zone, according to the governor. But it was highly encouraged by the Department of Health, and our goal is to test 5% of staff and students each week for a total of 20% of staff and students by the end of four weeks. And we will reevaluate the need to continue this and a couple of reasons. One, how well it's being administered, and also our ability to get the rapid tests from the county. I will share with everybody that today we tested 70 people in one day. 14 of those were staff members, the rest were students, and we had zero positive cases of COVID out of the 70 that we tested. And I'll provide updates as we go through, you know, each, each week when we have our results, we will update the community. We won't do it daily, but we'll do it after we get a total of each week. Just some instructional program updates. We've received a question, I think it's a great question, around where are we in the curriculum? Obviously, it's not just Penfield, but across the nation. People are talking about students falling behind because of the world of hybrid and virtual instruction. And I just wanted to really point out for our community, but also give thanks to our directors, our principals, teacher leaders, all of our faculty, our Office of Instruction. Over the summer, and then continuing out throughout the school year, our curriculum maps were revised to prioritize essential content. So in speaking with our classroom teachers, we are where we would have been last year at this time. It's because we're not, we are looking at prioritizing the content, focusing on the essential, and making sure that our students will get the education that they would have gotten any year outside of COVID. We know that obviously, stress is high, and that students are bringing in lots of other concerns because of the world we're living in now. But I wanted to assure parents and students as well that our teachers are doing a fantastic job prioritizing the content and making sure that we are on track to hit the standards that we need to in each grade level. The other reminder for parents is that everything in education is cyclical. So next year, when we talk about ELA standards, regardless of what grade students are in, they'll be reintroduced to themes and the ELA and math content each year throughout their, their K-12 schooling. And so, again, incredible work from our directors, our teacher leaders, Office of Instruction, and obviously, our teachers who are continuing this work. The other question that continues to come up is, what about state assessments? Are we going to be administer, administering grade three through eight testing as well as Regents exams? And this is still an unknown at this time. As soon as we learn of a change, we'll update the community. But just as a reminder, this is a federal and state decision. So our understanding and our hope and our advocacy is that the tests will not be given this year, especially our three through eight tests. I will be honest that we're advocating for a two-year hold on those tests, but we'll look at each year. There is discussion that the federal government has to allow states to make the decision to step away as part of our ESU requirement. And we do believe that with, with potentially a new director of, or Secretary of Education, that that may become a reality. So we don't have an answer yet, but we're monitoring this, and we will share with the community, because I think that will take, take, allow people to take a step back for a little bit, know that we're going to hit all the content students need. But to provide a test that has to be given in person might not be the best thing to do this year. Other instructional program updates. We have talked, and we've heard from multiple stakeholders around the current structure of Wednesdays. I want to be honest and transparent. We will get this out in an email as well to the community later this week. But a return to in-person instruction on Wednesdays is not feasible at this time. There's a number of variables that come into play, including transportation, our, our current curriculum maps, our staffing, and how our Wednesdays are being utilized. However, we're continuing discussions on how we can best support and even better support students in a virtual platform on Wednesdays. So we're not giving up on these conversations and really digging deep, but we also want to be fair and honest that a simple return to Wednesdays is not feasible at this time. We will return, the other question is, will we return to a normal five-day schedule this year? With lots of talks about vaccinations and that light at the end of the tunnel, many people are feeling a great deal of hope that COVID will be fully behind us and will be able to come back to school. That is our hope too. I want to make everybody in the community understand and know that as a school district, we want nothing more than to return back to school five days a week with all kids. However, regardless of the vaccination and that light at the end of the tunnel, the COVID precaution mandates from the state must change before this would be possible. The reason we're not back five days is because of our spacing issues and our staff issues. We have too many students and not enough staff to put the kids in the classrooms and make them six feet apart. And that, that is really the, the issue on why we're not back to school five days a week. There are districts that have less class size and more space in their buildings that they were able to figure that out for K-5. We simply can't. We had class sizes of 27 going into COVID and trying to split those classes up to find enough space. It's not possible in Penfield. And we've talked about this a lot. However, due to that six feet distancing, it won't be possible to bring kids back. There is conversation, and our hope is that that could change. But until that changes, the vaccinations won't change how we can bring kids back into school. So we're going to monitor that. That again, is a New York State decision outside of our control, the six-foot distancing. A little bit of, believe it or not, we're going to start talking about next school year. So as a reminder for the board and for the community, every year, there is a Monroe County Calendar Committee that meets, and that committee is made up of public schools and private schools, the Diocese of Rochester, a number of different groups that look at all of the federal state holidays, look at the testing schedules, and look at what the calendar looks like, especially around February break and April break. Because we want to make sure that our breaks especially are the same across the county. So the Calendar Committee met for the first time last week. We hope to have a countywide calendar by next month, by February. And then we would be bringing, working with the board and our collective bargaining group to bring a calendar for board approval. Our goal is to have that to the board for review and approval by the last meeting in February, which is consistent in previous years. It's usually passed by the board in February, sometimes March. So we'll hopefully be able to get that out. And yes, we are looking at a hopeful return to five days next week. Obviously, that's going to play a role of state changing what that looks like. So with the six-foot distancing. But we're hopeful that next year will be a return more to normal than we've been living with COVID this year. More to come on that. And that concludes my updates. I will take any questions while I unshare my screen, and Dr. Driffl can share his.
Okay. Board members, if anyone has questions, just raise your hand so I can see you. That's the easiest thing. Anybody? All right. Tom? Let's see, so you said you mentioned you tested 70 students this week. How did that, how did you break that out as far as amongst the schools, the buildings?
Sure, so we, it was just, just today. That 70 tests were administered just today. 14 of them were staff, and the rest were students. They were distributed, right now, we are different, testing differently than we did before Thanksgiving. And that is that we are testing at each school setting. And so it's the school nurse who is administering the test. So it's the nurse that students in that building know. And those students, it's 5% of their student body population by the end of each week. So it's about a percent to 2% a day. And they were, it looks a little different in each building, but they're basically called to the nurse's office or brought to the nurse's office with their class and given the test very quickly. And they return to what they're doing unless we have a positive. I just want to share too, Mark, what that question is. If, if and when we get a positive case, we are very, very careful on how we communicate with that student. So they are not called out in front of anybody, that we protect all their HIPAA rights around the knowledge of a potentially positive test.
So it sounds like you're able to basically, since it's dispersed like this and a lower count, you're able to integrate it into the, the school day versus having a breakout for it essentially?
Absolutely. So our big, one of our big focuses was not to have any loss of in-person instructional time with this testing. And so there is, you know, as we work through this, that is our goal, and we met that goal today. Students aren't losing any instructional time to, to take their, their test. The test itself, as you recall from before Thanksgiving, takes about 15 seconds. It just has to wait for 15 minutes. But we are not holding on to the students for that 15-minute period because they are wearing masks and they're distancing. So they are able to go back to class and not miss any time.
Great, thank you. So board members, any other, anyone else have any questions for Tom before going to the, Dan for the budget? All right, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Everybody see the screen there?
Yeah.
So budget development for the 2021, 2022 school year, with the turn of the calendar now really begins in earnest. We've gotten budget packages back from all of our departments and buildings, going through all of the data and sorting through all the requests. Have to say that everybody was great, very timely. Everything's within the budget parameters that we laid forward for them. Obviously, much more conversations to come. But in general, the internal mechanism of budget development here has gone well. So we have a number of budget updates for you tonight. We were hoping to have more, which I'll get into in a moment. But the first thing that I want to go back a couple of weeks, because we haven't had a conversation about this, yes, was, you know, was the passage of the new federal aid package that passed at the end of December. The actual act, it's not an easy acronym like the CARES Act. It's the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. So it ended up being a $900 billion package, of which $54 billion was earmarked for K through 12 education. Of that $54 billion, about $4 billion is headed to New York. So like the CARES Act, it will be administered through all of it, through the Department of Education. It's not going to go through the federal application process like we do typically with, with other federal money. Unlike the CARES Act, this money does not have sharing provisions attached to it. So the non-public schools in our locality aren't entitled to any of these funds. The full allotment will ultimately be Penfield Centrals. We don't know exactly what that $4 billion for New York looks like district by district. But because it's federal money and because it's akin to how CARES Act is rolled out, we're presuming it's going to be in accordance with those federal title statuses, which is primarily driven by socioeconomic conditions. Because the package itself is substantially larger than what the CARES Act was, not overall package, but for how much K through 12 education funding is involved, we presume it will be more. So we got a couple hundred thousand dollars back in the CARES Act. So if you just do a quick linear extrapolation based on the size of this package, it's about four times the amount. So we could be looking at somewhere around $1 million in funding from this package. That would not supplement a 20% aid withholding that we continuously hear about from the state. 20% of our state aid would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 or $6 billion. But that's what we know for now. There was a memo released at the end of last week, essentially saying that the state will move forward in setting up an application process. They're going to outline the parameters exactly by which this funding can be accessed. It's just not in effect yet. And the other thing is, we don't know exactly if that funding will be applied to the state's current fiscal year, the 2021 fiscal year, or next fiscal year, the 2122 fiscal year. I should note that there is already talking, a proposal from President-elect Biden about an additional package, the American Rescue Package. That would be another very large federal stimulus injection that is a total of about $1.9 trillion. And of that $1.9 trillion, about $130 billion or so is at this point targeted for K through 12 education, higher education. So if you take, you know, $54 billion into $130 billion, you're looking at almost three times the amount of funding. So for us, what could that look like? My sense at this point, what we're starting to hear is that the federal government, Congress, under the new leadership, is going to make this a priority. But that said, Congress has a lot on their plate right now with different appointments and potential impeachment hearings and all of that. So we'll keep an eye on that through the spring, because as we'll discuss in a, in a moment, our governor and his executive budget proposal that was given today is leaning heavily on the rhetoric of the future planning of the federal government. So we'll see what happens. So in this atypical year, the governor took an atypical approach to the executive budget process. So last week, he had four separate state-of-the-state addresses. Typically, this is just a one-time state-of-the-state affair where they bring in the state assembly, they bring in the state senate. It's a lot of pomp and circumstance. And then, within a day or so, we get actual budget numbers for what he's proposing for Penfield Central and every other school district in the state. So last week, it was just heavy on rhetoric, very little on detail. It was very COVID-focused, obviously, talking about the vaccine rollout, different grant programs specifically for restaurants, targeted healthcare initiatives, so on and so forth. The things that I gleaned out of it that were most applicable to schools and Penfield Central in particular, the two big initiatives this year were access to broadband internet. So in the pandemic world of hybrid learning, we've certainly learned that broadband access is paramount. So while it's a little bit less of an issue here at Penfield, there's a lot of rural area in the state of New York. And what his initiative was is that for all low-income households to have access to $15 per month internet. So stay tuned on that. And then he had a lot of discussion about green energy and jobs of the future for, for the state, particularly the dichotomy of energy usage between upstate and downstate, which has always kind of been an issue with state government and never fully addressed. And then on the revenue side of things, mobile gaming, gambling, sports betting has been proposed along with marijuana legalization. So New York is at least at this point proposing to join other states in those initiatives. But we'll see throughout the spring where those discussions go and what the ramifications will be for our school. So the governor announced yesterday that he would give his executive budget today, this morning. And to no real surprise, the budget address leaves many questions. Typically, as I mentioned, the governor will give his executive proposal. Schools will get what are called school aid runs. NISBA typically distributes them. So those of you who have been on the board have probably seen them before. This year, we have not seen those. And the governor took an approach that was unique, but not entirely unexpected, where he laid out two framework scenarios for the budget development process. One in which the state receives $6 billion from that Coronavirus Relief and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act, leaving a $9 billion budget gap. So he's been talking for nine months about a $15 billion hole. If you go to the Division or Budget, or if you go to the Controller, that number's a little different. But in fairness, the, the year's not over, their fiscal year's not over. Under this scenario, further budget measures would be required at the state level. Though he specifically said cuts to expenditures, additional revenue in the form of taxes, or potential borrowing on the open bond market. So obviously, the less preferable path, but he indicated this was the worst-case scenario. The second option, which is what he's certainly hoping for, was that there would be no budget gap, and the state would be made whole, that further $9 billion from an additional federal aid package. The budget briefing book, which he always releases annually, was released this afternoon around four or five o'clock. It goes into some more detail about education, but not anything particular to Penfield Central. But it did have some initiatives in there that I wanted to point out. One, he is once again proposing to consolidate all of the expense-driven aid categories. So things like Vocize Aid, Transportation Aid, High Access Cost Aids for our special programs into one services aid category. This is something that those of you on the board can recall he's proposed in the last couple of years. It hasn't gone anywhere with the legislature because of advocacy efforts by different, you know, educational groups. It would bring into question the long-term funding resources that we've gotten accustomed to. So that's something to look at. Additionally, one other measure that was in there was a half reduction of charter school tuition supplemental aid. So typically, on all charter school students, we get $1,000 in aid back. That would be cut to $500. Not as big a concern at Penfield Central, but around the state, that could be a real talking point, particularly with Board of Educations. So as I mentioned before, we don't have specific information yet on what exactly this means for Penfield in terms of a dollar amount. But my hope is, is in that, you know, days and weeks ahead, we're able to glean a little bit further information for our specific circumstance. But my hope is, is in that the days and weeks ahead, we're able to glean a little bit further information for our specific circumstance. So the other side of our revenue, now that we're done talking about state and federal aid, which is about a quarter of our revenue. The majority of our revenue comes from the local local tax levy. So this is just a hopefully easy visual that reminds us of what that actual tax cap calculation looks like. Hopefully, it's large enough and you can read it. It's not overly complicated arithmetic, and we're going to walk through our formula just in a second here. But it is more complicated than just the old two percent tax cap. So I know we've done a good job here. I know other local districts have done a good job of educating the community that it's not just a one one factor increase in the allowable levy. There's quite a bit that goes into it. So you start with the prior year tax levy, you multiply that by the tax base growth factor, which is number that comes from the Department of Tax and Finance. That essentially accounts for all new permitted growth in the community. It's not reassessments, it's not increased assessment value, it's actually new new development. You add in any pilot money that you received the year before. Pilots, as a reminder, are payments in lieu of taxes that are typically set up between businesses and the county's industrial development agency, but can also be directly with the taxing jurisdictions, the county, the towns, schools, and villages. You then subtract any capital tax levy that you may have had in the prior year. You multiply by the allowable growth factor, which is the CPI number. That's the inflation number that gets the misnomer of the two percent tax cap. So we'll talk about the CPI in a moment. You subtract any pilots receivable that you have forthcoming in the next school year, of which we have two. And then that makes you arrive at the tax levy limit before exclusions. You then are eligible to add in one of three or all three potential exclusions. Penfield does not have any this year. The first of which would be if you had any legal costs that were more than five percent of your operating budget. So we do not. Any capital levy that you would have to add in, and then if there was any exclusion for pension costs. Those exclusions kick in when the pension systems raise their rates by more than two basis points. We're still waiting on TRS actual final rates, but we know they're not going to increase more than half a percent. And the ERS rates that came out back in the fall increased one point six percent. So while a substantial increase, not enough to justify the exclusion. So let's first look at that CPI number. So this is measured by the CPI, specifically urban, all areas. There are different forms of inflation measures, and inflation is just a very interesting topic right now. But what you can see is since the tax cap legislation went into effect, ten years now, you can see that what the actual CPI number was in the prior calendar year, in the middle column there, the inflation rate, and then what the allowable growth factor was. So I'll point out years like nineteen twenty, where inflation was at two point four percent, the year before where it was two point one, but the allowable growth factor that was capped was that two percent. Obviously, if it's under two percent, like it is this year, the one point two three figure, that's the number that you have to use. I took a quick mean average of the past ten years to quickly show that, you know, we're certainly under two percent in terms of both inflation rate and also due to what we actually got to utilize as the allowable growth factor. So more like one point five percent versus two percent. So here is our projected levy limit for next school year. This is a number that, at this point, all we have to do is turn it over to the Department of Tax and Finance and the comptroller's office by March first. As you know, we don't actually adopt a tax warrant, tax levy until August, when rates are set and we notify the tax receivers and collectors. But this is the formula that we need to turn over. So the way this works, if you're not familiar or you don't recall, is if we want to levy on the community up until sixty eight million dollars, two hundred and thirteen thousand and five hundred and fifty eight, we simply require the typical normal fifty percent community approval. If we wish to levy a figure that is above and beyond that amount, we would need the supermajority approval, which in our state is defined as sixty percent, as opposed to fifty percent. So just really quickly walking through the mechanics of the formula. Our current year levy was that sixty six eight nine five nine eight eight, times that tax base growth factor, little under one percent, point seven five. If you recall, we discussed this back in our meeting in December. We were about average for the county and about average for where we typically are. So although twenty twenty was a weird year for development and life in general, the growth we saw, the new growth, was actually pretty consistent. That makes you arrive at sixty seven million. You add in the prior year pilots of a hundred and forty eight thousand. You subtract any prior year exclusions, of which we did not have any. Multiply by that CPI allowable growth factor. You subtract pilot years coming out. As I mentioned before, we have two active pilots. The way the County of Monroe's Industrial Development Agency structures their pilots is that the abatement, the exemption that they receive declines every year over ten years. So that's why you see that revenue tick up a little bit, fifteen thousand dollars or so, year to year. You then add in any available carryover from the prior year, of which we did not have any, which makes you arrive at your local levy limit. You add in any coming year exclusions, of which we do not have. So it stays at that sixty eight million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollar figure, which is a dollar increase of one point three million dollars, or a percentage increase of one point nine seven. So I think that back at that meeting in December, we had said that CPI was tracking around one point two percent. And with that tax base growth factor being point seven five, we would be around two percent. So that ended up being quite close. And here's just a look back in that same decade of what our actual levy limit cap was on a percentage basis. So this year's one point nine seven percent, rounded up to two, would be the second lowest that we've had. Sixteen seventeen year, our cap was at one point five percent because CPI that year was incredibly small. It was just a tenth of a percent, I think it was point one two. But you can see in general where we've been, and I should note that Penfield and the Board of Education has a longstanding commitment not to break that cap. We've been under the cap or at the cap every single year since this legislation went into effect. So at this point, we still have a lot of outstanding budget questions. What does programming look like for next year? And I don't mean that just in the context of COVID, hybrid, virtual. We we are looking at, what does it mean if kids that maybe took a year off, kindergartners that didn't come in? Do they come in in kindergarten? Do they come in first grade? Is there going to be a need for more AIS services? Some of these questions, we we're not sure of yet, but we're having those discussions and trying to flesh out further information and put a dollar value to it as we develop the budget. What is enrollment going to look like? So we've already started asking families to register for next year. We have our projections that we outlined in the fall, but last year's volatility was demonstrable. We had quite a few kids go to non-public schools. We had quite a few families choose to homeschool. We are curious to see what that's going to look like. Are we going to see an influx of kindergartners that maybe took a gap year? We're down a couple dozen kindergartners. Are those non-public school kids going to return, or are all those homeschool kids going to return into the Penfield Central School District? So we're keeping a close eye on that. Hard costs in particular, most of them are established. And when I say that, I'm talking about things like rates, like our health rates, our dental rates. TRS costs are not finalized yet. We should have a better idea of what that looks like in the next couple of weeks. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a lot depends on what further federal aid is passed and then what the trickle-down is to New York and what trickle-down is to Penfield Central. Because as the governor has outlined, that's going to be the bar by which he develops the actual state aid. And then, just as we move into the budget development process and the vote, the vote is a reminder, the budget vote is always typically, other than last year, the third Tuesday in May. So that's on the calendar for this year. One of the things that we had planned to do earlier, but now is pushed off until May, is our land purchase referendum to the community. So this is the Berry Turkey Farm, as most people know it. We hope that this is the potential future site of our transportation garage and buildings and ground facility. The money, the vote, is subject to public approval. It's about eight hundred thousand dollar purchase contract for a very large acreage. If successful in the passage, if the community supports buying this this land, of which is paid from existing reserves, there's no tax impact associated. Our plan is to move forward with another community referendum this fall to actually improve that that project and what that project would look like. In addition to the buildings and ground and transportation facility, there's also a lot of schoolwork that was outlined in our last building condition survey, maintenance work, some smaller items, but it wouldn't just be the garage itself. There's some school building scope in there as well. So at our next meeting and staying on schedule, we have a seeker consideration for the board through all the analysis between the architects and the environmental attorney. It was determined it's a type two declaration, a negative declaration. So there's no adverse environmental impact from us purchasing that land with our intended use. And that takes us to the end of our budget development updates. Any questions?
Thank you, Dan. Board members, any questions for Dan? Catherine, you're on mute, by the way.
Dan, these are the numbers you're working with now. Is there? And you said that the governor was very much heavy on the rhetoric and and little on the details. So can we assume that these numbers could change, or do you think that this is pretty much where we're at?
So in terms of the actual state aid figures? So what he did is outline that this option here, number one, was the worst case scenario. And he didn't outline what those further budget measures would be. Would he, you know, reduce foundation aid like he did last year? Would he keep it flat? Would he potentially cut a certain aid category? Would there be a freeze? Would there be increased taxes and maybe education not effective? So I think, hopefully, Robert Mohica, the state's budget director, had a news conference this afternoon where he kind of discussed a little bit more information. And like I said, that budget briefing book came out this afternoon. Hundred and fifty-five pages, so I didn't get through all of it yet. But you know that NISBA, organizations like NISCUS and ASBO are going to turn this thing upside down in the days ahead. So certainly by next board meeting, February second, I'm confident I will have more detailed information.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else have any questions? Lisa.
So Dan, you're anticipating then that he's going to try to pass through whatever we get federally? Is that what you're saying? And then if not, we probably have to look at reductions? Is that, I mean, is that what your feeling is?
So it's hard. I don't want to speculate. Right now, the clock is starting. The legislature, the senate and the assembly have a compressed legislative window this year because of COVID. They're doing a lot of things virtually. They have a budget due to the governor on March thirty first. It sounds like it's far away, but it's, you know, you know, less than two months worth of working days, and they have a lot to get through. So the rhetoric has been, yes, we're hoping for more federal aid. If that comes to fruition, maybe it'll just be status quo, things are good. We'll increase foundation aid by a couple percent and things will be as normal as, you know, they could be. If it, federal stimulus fails to come through, they're going to be pressed, the Division of Budget, under the governor, to put an actual number forward to the senate and assembly, because the senate and the assembly is not going to do guesswork. They're not going to take a figment, an imaginary number. They need something hard to work with in their negotiations process. So it's going to be an interesting spring to watch Albany and keep an eye on not just education, which is a substantial part of the state budget, I think it's around twenty five percent, but the whole state budget writ large and how this comes together.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, Dan, I had a couple of questions. I think the one slide prior to where you are now, I believe, here, the federal aid, it was when you talked about the federal aid one. You you'd mentioned that there's an application process. So this is federal money that's coming to us, but we have to. When you said application process, that makes me think we have to apply for it and justify our needs. Is that the way that's set up?
Yep. So this is akin to other federal grants. So remember the presentation that Mr. Pfeiffer did a couple of months back about the Title I grants, the Title II grants, Title III grants. We do need to apply and show what we're planning to use those funds for, make sure they're appropriate with the intended use of the specific grants. And it is actually reviewed and approved. If there's any modifications required, the state has us go back and forth a little bit. But yeah, that's how they're planning to administer it.
Okay, so this is that part that's rolled into the schedule of what schools get, how much money, where they're dividing this up, you know, through the normal, like they do with foundation aid and all that. This is, as I said, it's grant applications.
Yep, yeah, it's true. You need a separate panel.
Okay, good. And I do want to say thank you for that tax formula slide. I know we go through this a lot, but it, people think two percent is two percent, and it's really that basis for the formula. And I think it's good that everyone gets to see that again. Oh, you know, the one question I had about the tax base, that a little about the tax base growth factor, does that include, let's say, negative items such as when people challenge their assessments, especially commercial properties, sound for assessments? Or I think recently, someone who owned a kind of a high-value piece of land donated it to a RIT. And that, so that comes off the tax rolls, I believe. So is that all factored into there as well?
No, so I may have mentioned it, but perhaps not. But the tax base growth factor does not take assessed value into account. It's just new new permitted growth numbers associated with a parcel that wasn't there before. There is an assessment change will be notified in the next couple of months. That's why at this point, we don't have any idea of what this levy looks like for the community, because we can't have tax rates yet. But typically, we'll have preliminary assessment information at the end of March. It's updated typically sometime in May, but it's not final until July first. So that's when we give that side of the equation.
Good. Good. Well, that helps a lot. All right, thank you. Again, board members, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dan.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Okay, bear with me a moment. Okay, and that brings us to change orders. We're at five A change orders, and you see that have the list of change orders in front of you. The those above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by the architect, Vic Thomaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, and the clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and assistant superintendent for business finance, Dr. Dan Driffl. Is, so at this point, be appropriate to have a motion and a second to approve the change orders I described above. Any, excuse me, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor, none oppose. The motion carries.
Thank you. Policies for First Read. So we have four policies that we see here, use of social media, defense and indemnification, board members and employees, the family and medical leave, and the employee assistance program. Would someone like to speak to the changes that were made?
Zoom, I can see people pointing at me. Oh, yeah, I'm happy to talk, just give an update on on these policies. Use of social media, minor change is being recommended. Really simplified language by removing the list of all possible types of social media. You know, when this policy came into play, just as, so people know, and reminder to the board, this policy was first adopted back in two thousand and fifteen when the district started using Facebook and Twitter. And so lots of things have changed social media-wise, so pretty minor, just remove the list of possible types because there have been new additions. So pretty minor, just remove the list of possible types because there have been new additions. And then there's a regulation as well. We had a minor change in that regulation. We added two more policies to the list of policies related to social media. And those, these are all online, people can go and look at. Policy 6540, defense and indemnification of board members and employees. We changed the references to the various sections of the law and instead stated in accordance with the provisions of education law. We've done this in other policies. As we know, if there is a law in place, that's going to supersede our policy anyway. So instead of getting in the nitty gritty of what law it is, it's just in accordance with education law. We made some minor edits by replacing the word shall with will and updated other policy references. So this policy references other policies that have been updated over time. So we just cleaned that all up. 6551, family medical leave. This was extensive updates and a complete rewrite based on advice from Erie Policy Services that we use in this district. So instead of trying to go through all the changes, you can see we did a strikeout of the entire policy and replaced it with the update. Family medical leave is legal, is legal language. And so we just wanted to make sure that everything in our policy aligns with the law. It is a policy that we need to have, even though there is a Family Medical Leave Act. And then 6560 is Employee Assistance Program, otherwise known as EAP. We just made some minor changes, but one to be noted is that employees, the immediate family members of all of our employees are also covered and they can utilize the employee assistance program to get confidential counseling, confidential check-in. And then we also replaced it minor, but I think this is where the policy committee does some incredible work. Instead of utilizing the term personal problems, it was shifted to personal challenges because as we continue to work in this district to take away the stigma around mental health for our students as well as all of our staff and within the community, you know, personal problems really has a negative connotation where we all deal with challenges. And so while minor word change definitely does, I think, fit into the world of the social emotional whole student focus that we continue to have in this district. That's it. And those are all first read, and so those are all online. And people can check those out. And any, with all policies for first read, any questions or suggestions they have? They can email Sharon Ergfits, our district clerk, and she'll get those, that, those comments to the policy committee for review.
Board members, any questions or comments on the policies? All right, and so we will review that at the next meeting for a vote for approval. We don't have any policies for second read, which brings us to section 8A, which is regarding the terms of board candidates, of board members. The terms of the Board of Education members, Mrs. Catherine Dean and Mr. Mark Elidge and Mr. William Jaeger will expire on June 30th, 2021. The term of office for a board member is three years. Board candidates, board candidate nominating petitions may be obtained at the district office beginning on February 22nd, 2021. 106 signatures of qualified voters are needed on the petition, which must be filed with the clerk no later than 5:00 PM on April 19th, 2021. Candidates should supply their personal biographical data and statement of qualifications and issues, qualifications and issues to the district clerk by April 12th, 2021 to meet the printing deadlines for the budget newsletter. The annual board, sorry, the annual Monroe County School Board Association. Let's try this again. The annual Monroe County School Boards Association Perspective School Boards Candidate Seminar has been scheduled for Saturday, March 20th, 2021. The district's meet, the candidate's night is to be determined. So now we have the committee meetings, the Monroe County School Board Association Committee meetings, the legislative committee. Catherine, since this was Zoom, so I can't remember if you were zoomed in or not, since we didn't sit next to each other. You're on mute.
Wait.
Here, I can hear you.
You can, okay. All right, yes, I was there. So what I took away from the meeting, it was a busy meeting. And, you know, there's a lot going on legislatively. One of the biggest things I think we all need to understand is that we have new legislative representatives and we have yet to really make contact with them to start our interactive relationship with them. And that is, that's coming up. So let me tell you some of the highlights. Of course, like Dan touched on it with the budget, but of course, you know, funding is always an issue. Mandates are always an issue. The promise of funds that we are always told will occur. You know, we always have to fight for that. When it comes to the funding mandates, we are, we are asking that they be funded and not from education funds, especially when it comes to COVID and to security. We don't want those mixed in with, you know, the big lump sum when we have to always do more with less. And we all know how that goes and we all have been, you know, we've all been dealing with that. We're looking for flexibility with the COVID relief aid. Local control, it comes down, our legislative committee is always talking about the need for the local control. We did talk about that teachers are stressed as well as the students. We're hearing it all over the county. And, you know, it's a good opportunity to say that we really do appreciate and understand and are aware of the stress that the teachers are dealing with. We discussed it at legislative and so I'm just sharing that. We had an issue right here in Penfield with our transportation department and lack of staffing due to COVID and other illnesses that are associated with the winter. And just as an example, some other districts are dealing with this as well. We had our meeting on January 6th. And at that, on that date, Russian we had, it was down 25 to 30 drivers for various reasons. So it's not just us, it's happening all over the place. Let's see. Regions is looking, currently looking at the graduation requirement. We have suggestions for the regions regarding current relief and permanent relief, which I can share with you, you know, but there, there was a lot that we discussed. Technology equity, internet access, as we've already touched upon in the budget or the governor's budget. And some of the legislative priorities we're looking at is guidance around the budget vote. This is going to be a big deal for all of the districts as we know. Because of what happened last year, are we facing the same thing this year? And if so, when can we know about that so we can make arrangements and we can plan? Vaccine logistics, are schools going to be used as vaccination sites? And if so, who's going to fund that? These are the things that we need to discuss with our legislators. Let's see. Sherri Johnson wanted us to know that legislature is in session. She's working with Harry Bronson to meet these new legislators. So, you know, I guess it's redundant to say it again, but that's, that's where our focus is at, is at right now. Get those meetings with our legislators, that's coming up in our next month's legislative meeting where we will be meeting with our new legislators, making those connections, letting them know what our priorities are. If you feel that there's something that they need to know, let me or Mark know and we can translate that message to them. Mark, was there anything else you wanted to cover?
Thank you, Catherine. You covered quite a bit of it. I just want to just touch on a couple of things. You mentioned the buses and one of the legislative items is that's really not as much the state level at the federal level is seeing if we can get bus, school bus drivers into a different licensing category so they're not, they don't have to take the same CDL license as, as truck drivers. The, and that would, that would solve a lot of our issues. Well, it would solve some of our issues, still getting people to, to want to be bus drivers, but getting them to be licensed to be easier. Then, you know, there's, I think you talked about foundation aid, but the other, I think, with that is the governor keeps wanting to bundle together, Tom touched on that. So we're, we want to make sure that it doesn't get bundled together and we, and foundation aid is still following the same formula and, and the titles are all still separate. So it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a needs based à la carte versus here's a pile of money, which you've got to make a fit. And the need, and these title grants are that way because the federal government must make sure that these certain situations, certain needs are adequately funded and that districts don't just chintz here and chintz there, that they do give the right amount of money to people to, to various educational needs. And I think, again, you covered, I'm just looking over time. And you talk about the budget schedule and then we've covered that too. So yes, so all those things going on. And it is, it is, you know, we've got new state representatives and now we're going to have a whole new administration at the federal level. And what they do trickles down.
Right.
There's going to be a lot going on, always is a lot going on.
Always a lot going on and hopefully it'll be a friendlier environment with education from the top down. I think I did see something come across my news feed today where the governor, of course, is threatening to raise taxes on the wealthy if the feds don't show up. And, you know, I don't, I just don't think it's helpful to go with the threats when we personally don't have any control over what the new administration is going to do. However, I think it's safe to assume that it is going to be a friendlier environment as to how that plays out and how we may benefit from it becomes, I mean, at this point is unclear. But I think the most positive thing that we're, we're able to do right now is make acquaintances and build relationships with our new representatives and help them understand our unique challenges because a lot of people really don't have a clear understanding of the different nuances that school districts face versus other governmental or bureaucratic, however you want to label it, entities.
And there's things that can, that hopefully the administration will do that will help, that will be a net help and not hurt. Like the, when the salt tax deductions, essentially property tax deductions for federal taxes were eliminated, we can, hopefully those will come back, which again, that doesn't affect our revenue from a school district or state perspective, but it does help people who deduct mortgage property taxes, they will get some relief there. So any questions on that? And that brings us to the information exchange. So Emily or Sean? You're both on mute?
Not, I was not able to attend. Sean, were you able to? All right. No, I was not, although I've asked for the recording of it. So I'd like to update everyone on the next meeting in two weeks, if that's possible.
Great, thank you, thank you. And then at the district committee, we've got the health and safety meeting, which was again Emily and Bill.
I can tell you that one of the things was the, well, health and safety, I think we talked about the property, Emily, is that right? So there was property that was pointed out that is owned by the district, but is being used, it's near the library or path there. That is being used and there was some concern over liability and what we should be doing about that. There's quite a rut there. So there's some concern that very easily somebody could fall there, get hurt, and then the liability would fall on the district. So that's being looked into.
Did they have any ideas to what they would do to resolve it or that that's pending the investigation?
It seemed, it seems like the easiest thing would be to maintain it. It really, they would make, you know, you, do you really want to fence it? Do you want to post signs everywhere? It just really makes just more sense to maintain it from, even from just an economic or a fiscal position. That was the big news. Everything, otherwise the buildings, because there hasn't been a lot of people in and out of buildings that, you know, the use is down. So it's pretty slow that way.
Any, anyone else have anything to add as far as Monroe County or district committee meetings? Okay, so we have no unfinished business. Do we have any new business? And with that, going to be appropriate, have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:13 PM.
I'll move. Second.
And any questions or comments? So what I'll just add is, because I forgot last time, we do have the upcoming meetings, which is January 21st. We have our policy committee meeting, the district office. And on February 2nd, we have our next board meeting, which, you know, again, we would like to have in the auditorium. We're doing this on a case by case basis. It'll be, I sent January, I'm sorry, February 2nd at 7:00 PM. And whether it'll be in the auditorium or Zoom will be determined. So with that, have all of the favorite journey at 8:13?
None opposed, motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:13.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.